Yeah.
Okay. Yep, that's Bowerheads. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be a part of your kingdom. And Lord, I thank you for the city of Brandon. Lord, I thank you for every man and woman that faithfully serves you in the roles that you have sovereignly placed. And God, what I ask is for wisdom and discernment, Lord, for joy, for faith, God, to believe, Lord, for the flourishing of the city of Brandon, so that it might be a representation of the kingdom of God. So, Lord, we welcome your presence, Lord, God, we welcome your wisdom, God, we welcome your work, and we pray, Lord, that the city of Brandon would glorify the name of Jesus. So, Father, we love you, we entrust ourselves to you, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Everybody's flag, please. Salute, play.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands "One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
See several good folks out there in the hallway. Appreciate everybody coming out this evening. Uh, I've got a few things to touch on here. Pastor, if you would, I'm gonna go first instead of you.
Great.
They're gonna get tired of listening to me. Board, I have a letter here from the mayor of Marion that I left copy for you. Uh, this year's state games were in Brandon. Some of the games, some of the fields were used in Pearl. First time the state games have been out of Lauderdale County since their inception. So, very pleased, it was a very good turnout, had eighty-three teams, where the record prior to this past weekend was fifty. Uh, what do you put in here? Was it fifty? Fifty teams. So, state games is a big part of Mississippi, and it enables five thousand athletes, thirty-three different sports, to jumpstart their summer in a competitive way. So, very pleased that Brandon was able to represent, uh, all of Mississippi in that regard. Uh, another thing I have, board, is a breakdown for some training I'm gonna try to schedule for us in service from, for, uh, the July one meeting. Uh, we'll have our Phelps Dunbar here, who handles our personnel and employee handbooks, things like that. I made a little outline for you to go by, and if you would, I'll print some more of these and have those, these for you when we meet next. And the last thing I want to say is that, uh, we've corresponded with Moody's, and our AA three rating has been sustained again, and very happy about that, uh, of our financial standing, and we'll move on from there. So, pastor, if you would, I know that you brought to everybody in the room, I think you got some vectors in the back.
We did.
If anybody didn't get one, that would like one, talking about Crossgate Church and the direction you're headed in. The floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. For one, yet again, I would like to thank each of you for your service and community, and I promise I'm not gonna make it a regular habit of showing up at all of your meetings, but I've had several conversations with Alderman and our mayor about what God has put in our heart to do at Crossgate's Baptist Church. And so, we wanted to just share with you through the little handout that you've got. If you look on the outside part, that is a picture of what it would look like coming down, uh, Woodgate. And also inside, you'll see the renderings of what we're currently working on right now. But what I'd hope to is for you to catch the spirit of it, that it's in our heart, and what we believe that God has purpose, Crossgate's to be, is to be a light in our immediate community. So, we're believing that renewal will start right there at eight, Crosswoods Road, and that renewal will spread from our Crossgate Church down the streets into our community and wouldn't stop, and that we'd be a part of God's restorative work in the city of Brandon. Here's the reality, every generation has a decision to make. Will they renew what has been handed to them, or will they allow those things to move toward ruin? So, for us, we celebrated yesterday fifty years as a church. Crossgate's Baptist Church turned fifty. She ain't looking bad for a fifty-year-old, but she needs a little help, right? And so, there's been five great building projects in the last fifty years at Crossgate's. And what we're doing by God's grace and through the faithfulness of the people of Crossgate's is that we're bringing those five buildings together through this renewal on really the outside of our facilities. And then, really important, you'll see in one of those pictures, we're putting a front porch on God's house. And if you, if you read the Old Testament specifically, when they built the temple, and then you read into the New Testament, talked about Solomon's portico, Solomon's colonnade, what that was, was a front porch on the temple. And if you study theologically, what that was is where the watching outside world could get as close to God's presence as possible. And so, what we want to say to the city of Brandon, we welcome you into the story of Christ. And that we want to say to future generations, we want to have an impact in your life. So, Crossgate's is here to stay, you know, Lord willing, until he returns, that we want to make an impact in our immediate community, and we want to see that spread. We also, and I hope that you'll hear more about this, that we are strategically planning in other anchor points of the Crossgate's community to partner to see renewal, so that we're gonna help strategically in different areas, we're gonna help identify even homes in the future on strategic streets, that we help bring renewal. We're in for the long haul, in for the long haul. So, we just want to take a moment to share. If anybody else wants one of those, you're welcome to them in the back. If there's any questions I can answer, if not, thank you for the chance to share.
Always good to see you. Appreciate your energy and appreciate, uh, the way God is leading that church and leading you, and, uh, Crossgate's has been and will forever be, I hope and pray.
Yeah.
A strong point from the city of Brandon.
Amen. Awesome. Appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else here this evening like to make public comment before the board? All right. Seeing none, we will begin to work our way through the agenda. Uh, old business, approve the work session and regular board meeting minutes of June the third, twenty twenty-four?
Second.
Most of them is Sharon Romack, second, Mr. Jared Crane. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right. Uh, board and audience, uh, we're going through some technical issues with large files that are being emailed as the board prepares for these board meetings, and, uh, Ms. Mary Ann, we had some problems Friday when it went out, then we had some updates that came in after five P M. on Friday, we tried to add, and then like I've tried to tell the board, sometimes Mondays around here feel like two or three Mondays rolled into one. So, we, there've been some additions to the agenda. We tried to communicate those throughout today to the board and had some difficulty in electronic messaging. So, I'm gonna choose to go very slow tonight. So, I'm gonna try to slow my pace and my voice down. Mr. Baker, if you would, just kick me under the table if I start going too fast, please. All right. All right, let's see here. So, let's take them one at a time. Let's see. All right, number one, let's just, uh, let's take it singularly. One item there. Discussion and consideration of requests for funding from Brandon Main Street Association, presented by Meredith McCullough, to assist with initial programming and hiring of an executive director to promote desirable activities necessary to promote and expand the economic position of the city of Brandon. Ms. Meredith, I know you're here, the microphone's on, and, uh, we're gonna take this item separately and singularly.
Thank you.
Good enough.
Thanks.
All right. I'm Meredith McCullough. I am the interim executive director of Brandon Main Street. I think I've met all of you either in that role or before that role before, but, um, I'm just gonna kind of tell y'all some things, recap, you know, the, the goal in Brandon Main Street. I know we've been here before, and we've talked to y'all about, um, partnership levels, and, um, we've restructured some things since we were here a little over a year ago, almost eighteen months ago. And, um, I was not on the board at that time. We have kept our board intact, but we've also gone, and they've reached out to me and said, hey, would, you know, you come in and be a board member, and then quickly we became, I became interim executive director, and I'm no longer a voting member of the board. But, um, one thing to note, whenever I was considering this, is, you know, I really looked at, what is the mission of a Main Street with Mississippi Main Street? Did my homework. Um, I have a degree in hospitality management, so I understand a lot of the tourism world and how all of that plays into economic development. And I started talking to Mississippi Main Street and some of those people, but Brandon Main Street came together at that point, and we formed our mission, which is to create a sense of place, community, and pride that reflects our city's values and history while embracing a prosperous and sustainable future. And we base that off of, we think the city's done a great job. We think that where we've gotten to today is a great, great thing. I'm from here. Um, went to Brandon High School, left for college, and then came back. So, I obviously like what's here, but there is a lack in, if you're not in family mode, if you're not married or you're newly married, there's not a lot of community for you, or if you're not involved in a church, there's not a lot of community for you here. So, Brandon Main Street has looked at that and said, okay, we need two things. We need a sense of community and place for everyone, and then we also need economic development. We need it to continue. So, through that, we've really applied the Mississippi Main Street approach, and in the past twelve months, we have hosted twenty-four events. Through our software, we can track that we have touched fifty-seven zip codes through those twenty-four events. We've seen seven states attend our events, four thousand three hundred and nineteen people at our events, and that's in twelve months, very grassroots, a hundred percent volunteer up until all of that. We have hosted citywide things. We've created something called Friday Flamangles. Anybody along Brandon's Main Street can participate in those. Our Main Street is from Crossgate's Boulevard to Lewis Wilson Drive. A lot of people have said, how did that become your Main Street? Well, you look at towns like Water Valley, um, even Pearl, just on the road, they're all based along a state highway. They don't have a formal square. And so, Mississippi Main Street gives us the freedom to do what's best for our town and what's the most inclusive for our town on a business, um, inclusiveness standpoint. So, we looked at it and said, okay, this is, you know, attainable for us. In the next five years, we feel very strong. We can come in, partner with businesses along this strip, and do some economic development. Um, because of city ordinances, if there's an event that has an alcohol component, it has to happen downtown. Downtown is our nucleus. As long as downtown is thriving, that's where it is. But just this weekend coming up, we have, um, Dog Days of Summer. We, as of, before, well, ten o'clock this morning, we had three hundred and thirty-five people who have voted in the Dog Mayor election. And people want a sense of community. They don't always want to wind down. They don't always want that, but we are doing, um, I guess, filling a void essentially. What can we do across town that, um, fills a need? Wind down downtown, that fills a need for people that want wine. Um, but we also see families come to that. And yeah, we can only include downtown businesses on that because of zoning, but we make sure that we order our cups from a local vendor. We make sure that the wine for the event comes from oh four two Wine and Spirits or another liquor store within three nine oh four two. We make sure that the pop-up shops that are within the stores are people from three nine oh four two. So, we try to make sure that we include as much of three nine oh four two as we can. Um, let's see. We also, you know, we are very strong, family-friendly oriented, all of our events. Um, we make sure that there is a component, even lighting of the Christmas tree. We made sure that there was, um, cookies with Santa, free photos with Santa, a reindeer food making station. We try to add and enhance to what the city is already doing. And, um, we have gotten to a point where, as a board of volunteers, we've taken this as far as we can take it. Our wheels could continue to spin, and I think what we've done is great, and it looks really good to be able to accomplish all that we've accomplished in twelve months. We had four hundred and sixty-three people that were signed up to run a five K. Um, but it's time to add in the economic development standpoint for it. And we're ready to look at hiring an economic development or business development person to be our executive director, and, um, really kind of tap into the four points of what a Main Street wants. And one of those four points is economic development. Um, a hospitality management girl can only do so much with economic development. I know tourism, I can keep the events and all of that stuff genin', but I, it's time for me to kind of step out of our way and pull in an economic development director. So, we have a funding request letter in the folders that I gave y'all tonight, and we would like consideration for funding to help us cover salaries of an economic development or business development-based person to become our executive director, as well as help fund a part-time person to come in and make sure that the events and the things that we've done continue to sustain. Our board will stay in place. Our board will continue to operate at the level we're operating at, to help support these two employees. But we have kind of gotten it as far as we can get it. The Mississippi Main Street method is a third, a third, and a third. We have gone and gotten private investments, and we're not just talking about a one-time sponsorship of an event. We're talking about an annual yearly investment into Brandon Main Street. We've gone and done that. We have also raised money with our events as our other one-third. And so, we are kind of looking at our city to help us complete the Main Street method and add in a third of the funding to help sustain. This person would, um, help work with Sam's office, help oversee grants. Just this morning, we received an email from Mississippi Main Street to go ahead and start applying for legislative grants within the state legislature for the next season. Emailed it over to Sam's office. We've already got a list of some projects to apply for. We, um, really believe as an association that we need to have somebody in the city of Brandon that is not just looking after tourism in the sense of the amphitheater, which I love. I probably see all of you there all the time. Um, but not just looking at, amphitheater can't be our only source of tourism. We've got to have some festivals and some annual events that come in, but also those events have to have economic impact. In every event that we do, we make sure that it ties back into a local economic impact and that it contributes to our two percent tourism tax that we have here in Brandon. So, any questions? On the board?
All right.
Could we get a vote on a promise to fund tonight? Sir, we have to have something by June thirtieth with a promise from our city so that we can apply for network status.
So, I remember week before last, you visited with me, and I believe you've got two of your board members sitting here with you.
Yeah, I should have introduced them. I'm sorry. This is Tanya Leach, our president. This is Johnny Beck on our board, one of the founding board members and over development.
And I believe that-
Putting it nicely.
I believe at that time, you said you were gonna, uh, have conversations with all the board members? And I don't, you know, I don't know, I have not spoken to any of them to understand where they are or what they want to do, and so I'll open it up now for them to have conversation.
I'll start. I, I'm one hundred percent for it. I travel all over the state and pretty much have my entire working career. And every town that you go to that has a thriving downtown is a member of Main Street. I mean, I, I'm to the point in my life where our kids are grown, and my wife and I, that's what we like to do, take a weekend trip to some of these small towns that have thriving downtowns. Okay? I mean, you know, and, and that Main Street, I, I've, twenty-five years ago, I tried to start one in Brandon, and the majority of the property owners down there at the time had no interest in it. Since that time, most of them have changed hands, and it's a totally different place, and I, I'll salute you, mayor, for your vision for downtown, for, for what you've done to get it started. But Main Street has a process that is a proven process.
Yeah, Mississippi Main Street, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interject. Mississippi Main Street's been around for forty years, just to kind of add that to the conversation. And we've also reached out to not just the downtown business owners. We've reached out to shopping center owners across Highway eighty, just to kind of say, this is who we are, this is what we're doing, not even shop, just business owners in general, um, that have said, you know, you're on Brandon's Main Street. We've got investors in Brandon Main Street that I can't name publicly because, but it's because they're like, oh, this is somebody that's kind of overseeing Highway eighty and Brandon's Main Street, and making sure that someone is working with the city to just progress and forward progress. So, but Mississippi Main Street has a method and metrics that we're required to follow, and they've developed that, it's changed, but they've been doing it for forty years. Ocean Springs has had a Main Street for, I don't know, roughly twenty, I might be telling a story there. Um, Laurel is like right at eighteen or at fifteen, I can't remember. Clinton's at eighteen, Tupelo. So, these cities that we love to go to on the weekends, and Gulfport and Ocean Springs that are getting all this Southern living, national attention, they have longstanding Main Streets of fifteen years plus. So, that's kind of us looking forward, what does the next twenty years look like? For the under forty crowd of us that live here, we want us to be an Ocean Springs, a Laurel, a, a weekend place.
All right. Uh, I know, a matter of curiosity, because I don't know the exact legislation. I did speak to the board eighteen months ago. We talked about this because, uh, we had, uh, state senators and representatives that were telling us that there was about to be grant programs inside the state, and then Congressman Mike, Michael Guest said the same thing, designated for Main Streets. So, there's a grant out there. This board, I drive this board crazy, and our department heads were searching for grants, everything, every dollar we can find out there is not ours to put it to work here. Uh, can you describe for the board, make sure we're on the same, what grants are out there?
Yeah, so we're looking, we're looking at three different grants right now. One of those is the Mississippi Legislative, that's the one I mentioned this morning. Last year, they gave, or just this past spring, they awarded six million dollars in grants across the state. It varied in projects. Crystal Springs got twenty thousand dollars, but, um, I want to say it was New Albany got two million dollars of the six million. There's actually in the packet that y'all have all received, and then also prior to this meeting, and then also in the right, um, pocket, there is a page in there that has a map, and out to the side, to the right, it tells you, it breaks down how the money was appropriated this year for that funding. They, um, changed a rule this year in this last session that if you received it in twenty twenty-four, that you were then knocked down, um, next year. That, that way it kind of equals out, and it's fair. So, likely is Crystal Springs will not get it in twenty twenty-five. If we, um, apply for network status by June thirtieth, which we feel very confident that we're gonna get, we wouldn't be here speak, I would not be here speaking to you if I didn't feel confident that we would get it. We'll find out at the end of August. The Mississippi Legislative Grant Project application is due the end of August. So, we, that's part of the reason I spoke to Sam this today, and it was, let's go ahead and get this grant going on the off chance that we are able to come up with a partnership with the city, able to submit our application on June thirtieth, and then we get it. We know who is also applying for this, and we feel very, they usually accept two people into network status. We feel very confident out of the names that were given. Brandon's one of the biggest people in the, in the pool, so it would make sense for them to give it to us. We have one of the strongest associate-level Main Streets out of the people who are applying. We also know who is kind of watching this, and know they've called me, they've reached out to me, and kind of going, hey, we're thinking about forming a Main Street, and they'll be in, they're running for it next year. So, this is kind of, if Brandon's gonna get to network status, which we have to do to get to designated status, Pearl is designated, for the record. That's why they have the road signs that says, welcome to Pearl's Main Street when you get to Airport Road. Um, if we're gonna get to, if we're gonna get to designated or get to network, this is kind of our year. This is our shot. Not saying we couldn't do it next year, but we know that we're gonna be going up against cities in the Tri-County area that are very strong, and, um, this is kind of an easier year to try for it.
So, what do you need, Meredith, to, uh, excuse me, get, get to network status? And what's, besides us saying we're gonna support you?
We have to show proof of funds. We have to show proof of return on investment of our events. We have to, um, show proof of investors who has said annually they're, they are contributing to us. We, we have to give a lot of financial documents. We also have to submit all of our events to them, our business plans for events. Um, it, it's pretty, it's pretty rigorous, and they, it, it's a weird situation to me to be giving somebody our business plan, and, oh, here's our template for all of our events that we've done that are successful. Um, but we have to do it. We have to show proof of ticket sales, proof of attendance, which is why we have software in place that we've been tracking all of this with. We also have to pay, um, our fee will go up from five hundred dollars a year at associate level. We'll go to, I have it in the budget, hold on. I don't have it completely memorized, but I think we go up to three thousand annually a year that we pay. We also have to have a paid executive director. That's the biggest thing that we have to have. I'm not currently paid. So, um, paid, and it can't be, it, it can be part-time, starting January first of twenty twenty-five, if we receive network status. So, we would, let me back up, sorry, doing math. We would apply by June thirtieth. We would find out end of August if we receive network status. From end of August, we have four months to have an executive director paid in place. That executive director can be part-time or full-time. We would prefer to go ahead and have someone full-time that we know is going to do it right from the beginning. We don't want to kind of get in there and have fires that we have to put out. We want to be able to guide and stay on as a board and continue to support, but we don't want to do part-time. That part-time person has to be in our office, ready to go, January first of twenty twenty-five. We are in the network status holding period, a minimum of one year. We should be two. The caveat is, do we meet all of the metrics that we have to meet? We currently already meet the metrics to go from network to designated as we stand as an associate level. We just have to formally go through network for one year. If we get network status, we are eligible for the Mississippi Legislative Grants. You do not have to be designated to be eligible for those. But, so we're, we're applying for that on the hopes that we get network status. Does that answer that?
Um, if, if we voted to commit to funding, um, how soon would you need those funded? Would that start January one?
We would like for them to go ahead and start October first with the fiscal year for the city. for the city. There's discussion that can be had. But in our letter of funding request, we put October 1st for the funds to start. And then we also put in there that, you know, we have a certain amount we would like to request if we get network status. If we don't get network status, we have a different number that we would like to request. And that's just to kind of help hold ourselves accountable through this.
All right. So, these numbers that you're throwing at us for support, so that's these four handouts?
There's four different ones. They're all based on different funding levels. This is, no Mississippi Main Street does it the exact same. Like, there's not a single one. I've been to several trainings, November, December, February, really gone through, sat down with Jennifer Lay at Mississippi Main Street, who is over the Association Executive Directors. And I've just, you know, pulled numbers. What does this person do? What does that person do? It, it's all over the board. I mean, it's really mind-boggling on how all they all do it. A lot of it depends on your city and the revenue that your city generates through their tourism taxes. And, you know, a lot of those numbers proposed are coming from Mississippi Main Street, you know. We need to follow the one-third, the one-third, the one-third method. However, if they gave you this amount, this is kind of what a budget's going to look like and what you're really going to be able to do with this based off of what you're already bringing in. And, you know, point blank, if we, if we don't have an executive director or someone who is actively going after grants and economic development, which is a large salary number, I've done a lot of homework on what does an economic developer get paid at city level, private level. I've been all over LinkedIn. We don't have anyone in mind for that. But we have had people approach us that are interested in it. But just kind of what do they make salary-wise, you know, we need a very professional economic development person running this thing. We, as a board, can continue to run events at the level that we're running and see the success. But if we were to bring in a part-time person with that largest dollar amount that we, they were asking for, we would be able to really take this thing to something like you see in Starkville, you see in Ocean Springs, you see through Visit Oxford and Oxford, Double Decker. You know, they've done the Double Decker 5K, I think 10 years now. Well, they see 400,000 people come in for a 5K, not for just the festival. Like, this is just the 5K. Visit Mississippi is associated through MDA, just like Mississippi Main Street is associated through MDA. So, you know, if we're able to bring in the professional people that we need with some salaries and some very competitive salaries, this thing can really get to the next level. And we can really be contributing a lot more than we already have to the 2% base here in Brandon. Yeah, that's fair. I would think we could at least do it quarterly. I mean, sometimes when we're in the thick of it and we've got events every two weeks, it's hard to sit down and like generate it, at least how we're operating now. If we had employees, I would think we could do it pretty quickly after every event, but I don't want to promise something that, yeah. Absolutely. That's fair.
Yeah, he asked if, and I asked Mr. Baker this, and we didn't really get an answer. I don't know if he had time to research the legislation. Okay. Well, so the question is, I'm not sure when, long answer to your question, bear with me. I'm not sure when Ocean Springs started theirs, or when Greenville started theirs, or when Oxford started theirs, right on down the line. And I suspect it was back in time when all you had to do was get your local delegation to go to the legislature and write some law, and it was rubber stamped, and there you go. Here, for our 2% food and beverage, we had to have a referendum. The legislature changed and required a vote of the people before they would approve that. And in that is some specificity that I'm going to ask Mr. Baker to speak to. I don't know if you've had a, a chance to compare Starkville or us or anything. Can you speak to what you-
And the closest opinion that we have on it is the Christmas celebration opinion that the Attorney General wrote in 2019 to the City of Columbia. And they were asking whether or not the Christmas event could be considered a tourism or fall within the theme. And the Attorney General said, you make the findings. You're the board, you make the findings. And so you'll have to make a finding that, in that regard. So, functionally, it's, it's whether or not, and these are event-based, these are not position-based. So, I don't know if the person that they intend to hire or they intend to use is going to do 100% tourism, 100% this, or if you're going to fund it through other sources, you know, two sources or one source, or you're going to allocate, you know, your, your findings are that 80% of this person's job or 80% of this is going to be tourism, parks and recreation. And then so you'll look for funding in other sources. Does that make sense?
Sort of.
Well, I mean, you just got to make findings. The law says you make findings, you make findings. You can use the 2%.
So, do I have to answer your question? I guess that would be yes, if you had findings to answer that. My recommendation would be not to use 2%, though. I'm just going to tell you, that's your, your, when you go into the bond market, you get a better rate on revenue bonds when you have an X amount of dollars coming in. And I wouldn't, I don't know, number one, I don't know what level you're talking about. Number two, I don't know the length of time. So, are you asking for, for now and forevermore, for one year to get started?
This is annually.
Two-year, three-year, huh?
Annually would be preferred. And then the way that Mississippi Main Street has explained it to us on, you know, if you pay out of the 2%, the way Starkville and other people have set it up is you come in and ask for this annually. They're able to look at your metrics. If it doesn't apply to tourism and the 2% tax, then they can adjust your level, not pay you, but it is an annual request.
So, board, I, I hear that as an annual request, you need some seed money to get started. And if they don't meet the metrics that satisfy you, then you reduce that amount until some point in time where you find some equilibrium there. Is that a short answer to that?
Yeah. I mean, hopefully we stay at this level and we can continue to perform at this level.
Right.
Every year. So, don't, I guess I would like not just seed money because it, this would be an annual request at the same amount.
Yeah.
If that didn't come out, the 2% would be out of the general fund?
Correct.
Aren't we a little tight on the general fund, trying to give these races to policing and fire-
We're, we're going to do that. There's two or three metrics that fall into play there. That's the number of employees that we have in the general fund, not in enterprise fund. That is privatization as much as we can, might have a little more to do there. And we've been heavily, I think 13 mills have gone, except for one year, to debt service. You know, I'm very proud of the fact that we've paid a lot of debt down, but we've been aggressive in that, using our millage to do that. And we really flipped it and did a great job of that. So, we've been very disciplined in using 13 mills a year to debt service to eradicate debt. And we're sitting in a good position now financially. I'm very proud of that, too. But yes. So, then it falls to an amount of how much. So, I see four pieces of paper here. It looks like a 50, 75, 100, and 150. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But instead of specifying an amount at this point, until we get through with our budget sessions, which we're in right now, could we just decide it?
I need a minimum amount.
I'm sorry.
I need a, like, on the, could we say, could we agree to say yes? Yes, but I have to have a minimum amount to be able to show a level of partnership to Mississippi Main Street. And I put on that letter like a contingent that we receive network status. And I'm, I think that that's fair, you know, for y'all to do a, a minimum amount with a contingency that they, that we at least receive this going up, going forward. Because I understand y'all are in budgeting and that you got to figure it all out.
Okay. So, you're not looking for funding now in the fourth, in the fourth quarter of the year, July, August, September? Back to Jared over here, you're looking for funding that would begin October 1?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Mary Ann, you know, you kept, you were the financial director and what, just out of curiosity, what did the City of Laurel fund into there? On an annual basis? So, about $40,000 annually?
They have an Economic Development Council in Laurel that also matches or exceeds that. So, that Laurel Main Street is receiving. I wanted to say that, I talked to Ross Tucker, and it was like $85,000 total at that.
Between the two. Okay. All right. Board, you got any more conversations, thoughts?
Man, I think y'all are doing a fantastic job down there. I'll say that. I'm with Chris. I'm for it. We just need to be able to find the funding in general. That's the only concern I have at this point right now is I want to be sure to get through the budget. Just me personally, there's six more.
That's fair. Thank you.
So, does that mean you're not ready to act tonight?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm looking, I'm looking for what the board wants to do here, you know. So, this designation is you're trying to get to, what, what, what funding amount do you need from a third, a third, a third to get to that level?
I mean, if we did the third, a third, a third, it would be right at $75,000. Or 75 to 100, we're in the middle. 50 would be under what we're bringing to the table as far as the thirds.
So, you have 75 from municipality, and another third, and another third, 75 and 75 from some other source, private and-
Between, between private investors and events, where we have 150, so.
Okay. So, a third of that you're raising on your own when you say events?
We're not 100% splitting it a third, a third, a third, because we're, we're supposed to be bringing two-thirds to the table. Now, they would like for us to be a third, a third, a third. But between investors, I mean, I can't disclose how much investors are doing. But we're, we're not, it's not an equal one-third and one-third on those two. But it's close.
All right. You, Brandon?
So, so what, I mean, what if we did the, the funding on the first year and then depended on what their investors and revenue was, cut it back if we needed to? I mean, if this is their budget and they're, they're getting more than two-thirds of it, then there's no sense in just doing a third just because you're doing a third. So...
So, are you recommending do 75,000? Is that what you're saying?
I'm for the full thing.
Oh, okay.
But, all right, Lou said, I'm, I'm one, one of seven over here.
And Alderman, if you also look at the budget differences in 75,000 and 150,000, there's a difference in the amount of events that we can go do. Because we're, we're ready to put money into employees and salaries. So, for what you're getting for 150,000 is the full meal deal. And what you're getting for 75,000 is the happy meal. So...
I'm just going to say this. Like I said earlier, I, I travel all over this state. I've seen towns boarded up, and I've seen Main Street come in and they're revitalized and they're booming. I mean, she, she said Ocean Springs, Tupelo, Amory, Pascagoula, I mean, you name them. They're, they're blowing and going now. And there are a lot of places in this town, in this state, just like Pearl and Richland and Madison, that are trying to create a downtown, that don't have a downtown. We've got a downtown. So...
It's all, it's genuinely all over the board. Some give 20,000, like Bay Springs, I think they give theirs like 15, 20, somewhere in that range. I'm sorry. Yeah, Laurel was at 40. Starkville gets 15% of the 2% tax, and that does not include the university. So, that would be, ours is set up very similar to Starkville and Ocean Springs, where they come in and they're, they did it all for a metrics of, if you're bringing in 463 people for a crawfish crawl, you're generating $20,000, you know, they're off of that one event. That, that's the metrics of it. So, but it's genuinely all across the board. I could request the letter. They don't typically release with every single one, to me. They have never done that. Because I've asked whenever I was trying to come up with our funding amount, what is everybody else making? What are they getting? All I get are the medians and then followed by a sentence. But remember, this is from Bay Springs to Starkville. And I'm like, well, that doesn't help me a whole lot. So, you know, Brandon, when you look at Brandon's size compared to Bay Springs, we, you know, we're much bigger, we're thriving, we're not as boarded up. There's just a difference in quality that you're going to get whenever you put more money to it. And the Bay Springs mayor was in the meeting with me for one of the trainings, and he talked about how, you know, if we could find more money in our general fund and get higher quality employees, we could be contributing more. Like, we want to be doing this. We want to have a Main Street and be contributing more. But we're so confined because of our current economic environment in Bay Springs. So, it, they all contribute. To answer your question, they all contribute differently. And some is what they can, some of it is based off the metrics and how we're performing.
All right. We'll chase a rabbit in the, so, board, do you want to act tonight? In form of a motion? All right. You got a motion before you, board? Anything else? Chris, anything else? Okay. Is there, is there a second to that motion?
That's what I requested. I'm good if he doesn't put that contingency in. Mr. Baker, would it help if you had a copy of that letter?
I've got yours.
Okay.
Meaning if they aren't able to achieve network status by October 1, that would change?
It would be August 31st. You could put September 1 to be safe. But their Mississippi Main Street board meets late August and selects network status and then lets us know.
All right.
Yes, sir.
And I would ask for, I would ask for the flexibility in that because you might, in, in year one, you might want to use some of the 2% money, might want to use all of it. But you might also want to do half of it there and half of it in the general fund. So, I would ask some and/or when we get to that through the budget process in the month of July, you'll be able to make that determination. So, I wouldn't want to- So I wouldn't wanna...
But you will have to make it at some point, you're going to do it.
And, and I think based on, i- if this is funded and, and they move forward, I think based on their track record, you can determine whether or not it's economic development or administrative or whatever it is.
I'm not sure the Attorney General expects, you know, I think there needs to be clear justification in the minute based on percentages, but those five are going to be checked, and then it's up to a fourth count of due diligence, so it's nice if things need to relax, it's just a fall, it's just a regular, you know. The, the notion for accountability, thinking, that was not... Okay, I mean, what you asked earlier, I said the motion. Okay. Conceded on the city of network status, follow the third one, and, and accountability information as, as required by the, as required by the board?
I like quarterly. So, we got a motion, so, so if we make those payments, that's, that's not a lump sum upfront or can those payments be made quarterly as well? So as we get feedback, we can?
You choose. You can, some do, some do it monthly. Like it, it's up to you.
Okay, so divide it by twelve months. That way when feedback does not come back, that's, uh, enticing and beneficial, we can look at modifying that. So you know on the front end that the board can decide this and approve this tonight and six months from now can totally reverse and change their mind. So, you know, you're aware of that, right?
As long, the...
All the pick 'em up sticks on your side of your other two-thirds don't manifest themselves and prove to be fruitful, then it's gonna be like, well, you know, we're not gonna be the lone stick here. Okay?
I have one last question, my girl, on the motion. It's, it's now at a hundred fifty thousand, when does that start to take place?
October 1.
October 1?
Correct.
If that's what y'all wish, that's our request. Our request is October 1st and, but you technically could start January 1st if you had to whenever you got into budgeting.
Put an October 1 in the motion and let somebody say, is that correct, on the agenda? Or something?
All right. Something you should take time to work through. All right, we got a motion, so, are there, is there further discussion, comment or question? All right. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. All right?
Thank you.
So that motion would pass six, one. Okay. All right. Now, we need to get on through the rest of the people's business here. I'll have some comments as we work each one of these, board, I'll make, as I read these, I'll make comments on each one independently. Consideration approved, number two, the lowest and best bid received from DATs in the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred dollars for the right-of-way tree removal in the Luckney Road area and authorize the mayor to execute same. We had two bidders, I believe Mary Ann, the second bidder was forty-eight. And we sent that out to five tree folks and we got two bids back. I was pleased to get two bids back and we'll work through that. Item three, consideration request to hire Pele Hachy Power Rule Fireworks to provide a twelve to fifteen minute fireworks display on July 3rd as part of the Brandon Amphitheater at a cost of eight thousand dollars. The accounting department has authority to make any and all necessary budget amendments to this transaction. Board, that is to Freedom Fest, a Fourth of July event going on that is precipitated by Cross Gates Baptist Church. And I'm gonna tell you, I wanna read these names out because I asked for permission to do that. That money is always, already been raised, uh, which means we'll write the check, but the money will come into us. Uh, so Murphy's Landscape, five hundred dollars, Cadence Bank, a thousand, Corin Maine, a thousand, Wagner Engineering, a thousand, Thrash Construction, a thousand, Ryan Harper, a thousand, Freddie Harrell, a thousand, and Hometown Magazine's two thousand, for a total of eighty-five hundred dollars. So, uh, those monies are coming in. I got the first check today and submitted that to the clerk. So this is a in and out for us, so it's not a, not gonna hurt us, but I would ask everybody to please put July 3rd on your radar screen to attend that. Item four, approval agreement to purchase and sell real estate between Energy Mississippi LLC and the City of Brandon, Mississippi comprised of five point two-four acres in the northwest one quarter of the northeast one quarter and the northeast one quarter of the northwest one quarter of section seventeen. I'll do all right on that, Mr. Baker. Township, uh, yeah, right next to it. You would normally do these in executive session. Uh, Mr. Baker and I spoke about this. This has been a long, uh, thirteen or fourteen months trying to secure this acreage beside City Park over here, uh, that will really assist with the construction easement, uh, that we'll build. We'll get to work on that, uh, but from Energy. And Mr. Baker, would you explain the cost of that so that the audience knows, please?
The cost of that is, uh, no more than, it's, it's thirty-five thousand, I think, is the total. That's, uh, fifteen thousand for the purchase, fifteen thousand for the professional work for Energy and five thousand, there's another expense involved. Energy is selling that to the city for book value. The appraisal came in at over four hundred thousand, I think, almost five hundred. And so, um, the only restriction is, is that the city use this for public purposes, which you're gonna use it for anyway. And they are gonna retain some easements to go to the, you know, they've got lines in there that they'll retain, but otherwise it's good to go.
All right. Thank you. So we're adding, uh, five point two-four acres to City Park and, uh, plan, uh, shortly, hopefully to be issuing... Yeah, I do, just, I want the public to hear it. Please do. Long and short of that, folks, is the street out in front of City Hall that runs east and west, that will connect all the way from the bank up here in front of City Hall, in front of the property next door to us, which will be a hotel and mixed-use building, law department, down to the police station, the library. So it'll put a frontage road in here that'll be a nice asset to what's about to be built beside us. Got it?
This appraisal is for four point two-eight of the five point four. There was another point nine-six that was thrown in, that is brought in, and this is three fifty. And so when you add the point nine-six, that's when you get to the, so the appraisal for most of it is three fifty and then the balance will get us up to around four hundred, a little over four hundred.
All right. And board, while we're on the Energy wagon train, I'd like you to mark your calendars for nine AM. I'll send this out in a text invitation, nine AM, uh, July the second. Uh, they're gonna bring those charging stations online downtown, uh, that are unique to Brandon and everywhere else, so, uh, look forward to that as well. Number five, consideration to, consider scheduling an item for the July 1st, 2024 Brandon Board Meeting and In-Service Management Training Session. Uh, the proposed changes to the FLSA regarding hourly and salaried employees presented by Todd Butler with Phelps Dunbar. I gave you an outline of what that's gonna be, board, uh, for your use when we get to that. So we'll also talk about some employees at that time as well. All right. Two corrections. Go ahead, Mr. Baker.
To it, that the, the DATs, D A T S, is Davis Thornton, I'm looking on the quote, and also Mary Ann, I noticed on his insurance, he didn't put the city on the additional insured, so let's make sure we get that if we can. And then as to the Energy Agreement, we also, and as part of the motion, we'd ask that the board also authorize the Marion City Clerk to execute the contract, perform the terms thereof and execute related closing documents. That way, once we're done, we can move on to the close. And that also find that all the, uh, requirements of the Mississippi Real Estate Acquisition Law have been followed, which they have.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Been working on that for a long time, glad to get to, how long you think that'll take to get all that closed out?
It's moving really quick, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Items two, three, four, and five, there are motion to approvals? Motion by Mr. Lou Coker? Second by Mr. Jerry Crane. Any further discussion or question? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Ms. Mary Ann, thank you for your patience. Now, Ms. Mary Ann, I note that you did not bring a bottle of water with you and I note that you have eleven items on the agenda. Mr. Baker, can we cut that at six? All right, so you're gonna go one through six? And we'll stop there.
Consideration to approve professional services agreements for the purposes of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill fifteen twenty-one and other law for related purposes. Authorize the mayor to execute the same and approve payment of all show-related expenditures. The first one, Sandy Hulup for an amphitheater performance on Thursday, June twenty-seventh. Night Ranger for a City Hall live performance on Sunday, August the eighteenth. Frank Foster for a City Hall live performance on Friday, October the eighteenth. An Emporium and Brandon sell-off agreement for Parker McCollum on July eighteenth. Number two. Consideration to approve the lowest and best quote received from Berry Landscape Inc. in the amount of forty-one thousand, four hundred dollars for the library planning design renovation and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Consideration to approve the lowest and best quote received from Tech Source Solutions in the amount of fourteen thousand for the replacement desktop computers for the Police Department. This will replace all the aging desktop computers the Police Department currently owns, which are approximately ten years old. The items are budgeted. Consideration of request to pay the annual invoice from Civic Plus, which provides the emergency and mass notification platform for the city in the amount of nineteen thousand, one forty-six point forty-six. Consideration for request for permission to accept a water easement from Trustmark National Bank pertaining to the Brandon Heights development, subject to the completion of the agreement. Number six, consideration for a request for permission to accept two sewer easements pertaining to the property on Morris Drive off Highway eighteen across from Brown Bottling.
Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann. I know that was in the, uh, the information to support all that. The laptops for PD will come out of the drug seizure fund, uh, what's going on. Number six, across from Brown Bottling is consolidated pipe where they're moving all that dirt, getting ready for construction there. And number five is, uh, the water line easement coming off of Highway eighty that will go underneath the street, the city street that we have and dead end on the south side of the street to supply water to that property. All right? Is there a motion to approve one through six?
Mr. Mayor, is, I, I think we need to add under three that it is gonna be paid out of a seizure fund, and so I'll do that if that's okay as part of the motion.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thought that might've already been in the... In the packet. All right? Anything else? Thank you. All right, item one through six, there are motion to approve those? Motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by Mr. David Ferris. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Ms. Mary. Go ahead.
Okay, starting with number seven. Consider designating City Clerk Mary Ann Hess as the fiscal year twenty-four MOHS designation of secondary signatory official for the City of Brandon, Mississippi and authorizing her to sign all financial, all official documents associated with this grant each month. Number eight, consider designating City Clerk Mary Ann Hess as the official authorized signer for the City of Brandon, Mississippi regarding the national prescription opiate litigation, which must be executed in order to participate in the relevant Kroger opioid settlement and authorizing her to sign all official documents associated with this settlement. Number nine, consideration of request recognizing Friday, July 5th, 2024 as an official city holiday by proclamation of Governor Tate Reeves. Number ten, request permission for City Clerk Mary Ann Hess to attend, to travel to Biloxi, Mississippi to attend the MML Conference, June twenty-third through twenty-sixth, and request reimbursement of travel expenses. Number eleven, consideration to approve the docket of claims for June seventeenth, the Fox Everett Claims released on said dates and the electronic fund transfers for May.
Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann. Is there a motion to approve seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven on the agenda? Motion by Mr. Jerry Crane, second by Mr. Lou Coker. To further discussion, thoughts? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Uh, Jerry Crane. Hello, Ms. Carley. You got seven items, you wanna blow through them all?
I will go through them all.
We'll take questions as we arrive, okay?
Y'all ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Item number one, consideration to approve pay request for, in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents from Hemp Hill Construction Company for the Highway eighty signal upgrades, Stonegate-Woodgate project and authorized payment of the same. Number two, consideration to declare an emergency repairs to the Marquette Road Waterwell. Number three, consideration to award the quote in the amount of ten-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars to Sullivan Construction Services for the Serenity Court Drainage Improvements Project as the best and lowest quote received. Number four, consideration to approve pay request three in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents from AdCamp Incorporated for the 2024 Overlay Project and authorized payment of the same. Number five, consideration to approve pay request one in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, seven-hundred-and-five dollars and sixty cents from U-Bank Construction Company for the Highway eighteen, four sixty, Highway four sixty-eight Sewer Force Name Replacement Project and authorized payment of the same. Number six, consideration to approve the quote in the amount of fifteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars from Sullivan Construction Services LLC for the Lewis Wiltson Drive Box Culvert retaining wall repairs as the best and lowest quote received. And number seven, consideration to declare an emergency, the sewer line repair near the end of Moro Street and/or Drive and append the minutes of June the third meeting regarding invoice H two-four-zero-two-three dash zero-seven dash five-two-eight-two-nine as part of item seven point four to show the declaration of emergency.
I suspect Mr. Baker has a question.
Yes, sir.
Number two?
Yes, sir.
What, where is that? I'm missing it, I'm sorry.
It should just be a memo right now, just declaring an emergency, uh, with the affidavit of emergency attached.
Okay, then you're gonna come back and what, what are the, what's the general nature that's the well?
Uh, yes, the well went down, we had electrical issues and also issues with the motor.
So you're, you're, you just want right now to declare the emergency?
Correct.
The well was down, a backup, uh, motor did show up that we sent off to have rewound, it did show up, so it's got a backup, uh, motor on it. And we've got a new one that we're gonna order and as soon as we get it, we're gonna swap them out.
Okay.
Yes.
What else you got? Uh, AdCamp, just to reiterate, we get questions sometimes about where are they on the streets and they've got to, I remind everybody that contract runs to September 1. Uh, so, don't try to outthink asphalt people, they just move as they need to move. Uh, the U-Bank Construction is the last leg coming under eighteen and under four sixty-eight to fix that sewer line down there. Uh, and what else? Go ahead, Mr. Baker.
Number seven, Carley, what are you, I'm missing this, I'm, the language is throwing me off. Are we asking to pay it now?
Yes, uh, well, it was approved on the last docket.
That's what I'm saying.
Um, so it was really to declare an emergency.
It's already been declared an emergency, right?
No, this was to declare it. We only did the affidavit, we didn't have it separate on the last one. This is the item, uh, it was with all the other Hemp Hill invoices and you asked me to bring it back separately to declare.
Oh, declare it separately as an emergency?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Got you. Okay. All right, got it.
All right, is there a motion to approve those seven items from Public Works? Motion by Ms. Sharon Woolmack? Second by Mr. David Ferris. Any questions, further questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carley. Thank you, board. All right, Sam. You got all these big documents we're throwing around out there with pictures messing everybody up, so you... messing everybody up, so you...
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've got two items, I'd like to take them separate.
I think probably should.
Mm-hmm. All right, number one, consideration to approve the development review applications for the following projects. Number one, Brandon Heights. Number two, Home 2 Suites. Number three, Heron Dental.
Want to entertain questions, comments, whatever we need to do. So, you want to give us a status report, staff report on next door to us, Brandon Heights?
Yes, sir. Uh, they're ready to pull a land disturbance permit. We've issued final comments to the engineers for the site plan. They've agreed to make the adjustments. Uh, we're working on detention, as you know, detention calculations. Uh, there's a few things, and Matthew can speak academically to this, and he might need to step up here and help me out, but typically what we're gonna try to do with these development reviews are, this is just a general approval of the project. We've already approved the rezone for that project. We've approved a site plan based on final comments that have been issued, which they've agreed to change. But this has, you know, I have a architectural elevations in there, there are a few architectural things that we're still working through with myself and Jamie Ware, uh, you know, representing the Architectural Review Board for the city. But, um, this is a general approval for the project. So they have, I believe we're at 98% construction documents, or 95% construction documents next door. Um, so they're ready to go, but this will allow them to pull a land disturbance permit. And I understand that with, uh, the access road that we were just discussing with the acquisition of that property next door to it, um, that will help drive as well, so they'll, planning on moving dirt into summer.
Okay. Number two. Oh, wait, let's hang on. Questions on Brandon Heights Board? Anybody got any specific questions? Where we are? Okay, number two.
Number two, we're at 98% construction documents, same deal. We're at the same stage, just kinda lucky that these fell together like that.
So the audience knows, where is this one located?
Uh, west of Chick-fil-A and Applebee's and that, uh, property on the, off of Stribling, Stribling Lane. Uh, Home 2 Suites proposed, we're at 98% construction documents. It's, uh, part of the tip over there, um, but yeah, I mean, they're ready to roll, they're ready to start moving dirt, so that this is what's driving them, being able to pull a land disturbance permit. And we're working through a few building things, but the site, we, we've issued our final comments, and they've agreed to, uh, make the changes.
And number three?
Number three is Heron Dental, which is on the north side of Highway 80 in a triangular lot near the post office. Um, we've issued some comments on that, simple stuff, um, just requesting an easement and things like that. This is just a general approval of the project. That one's nowhere near with the, where the other two are, it's way early on on that one.
All right. Any questions, board, on those three? Is there a motion to approve those staff reports? Motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by Mr. Lou Coker. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Number two.
Number two, reconsideration of the vote, the board vote taken at the meeting on June 3rd, 2024, in which the Board of Alderman denied the rezoning request for Jet Investments LLC and SNS Builders of Mississippi Incorporated regarding property located on Old Highway 471, 13.8 acres, parcel number 19E-2. And that's the Brookfield Development that we talked about last meeting.
Okay. Mr. Baker, go ahead.
There was a request to reconsider this, I just wanted to let the board know the process that you would go through if you were so inclined to do that. The first thing would be, is to have a motion and a second, and that pass, to reconsider the vote whereby the application of jet investment in SNS Builders failed. If that motion carries, the matter is then back before the board, and if you're inclined to grant it, the application, then that would be the motion and the adoption moment. So there's actually a two-step process involved.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. I didn't know quite how to word that on the agenda board, but, uh, so first, we need a motion and a second and a vote, uh, to rescind that action and talk about it again. Is that a good way to say that?
Yeah.
Okay. So is there a motion to rescind, uh, that board action for rezoning that property described? Uh, who said that?
Dwight.
All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Dwight Middleton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sharon Womack. All right, is there a discussion on rescinding that? All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Okay. Got those two.
So the matter's back before the board, Mayor.
Matter's back for the board. All right, so is it, does it need to be conversation about why this change has come before us, or is, or there need to be any findings here?
Well, uh, by, uh, by request of the board. Board members.
Yeah.
Dwight, any requests? Uh, yes. My major concern in the past was that, and the concern for the citizens in Orchard View, which was next door to this, uh, what would be this development. We met and some of the residents from Orchard View met with the developer, and, um, and they pretty much assured us that their, the flooding was the issue that Orchard View, uh, is experiencing on their backside. And they were, they were convinced, uh, that, um, the flooding, it would, the flooding would not be made worse, and in, in most, uh, in reality, would probably even make it, uh, lighter, better. So the, uh, engineers were there, uh, and, uh, to, uh, enlighten everybody as put there, how it was gonna be made and, and, uh, and how it would give, probably give some relief. I think they said up to a good relief from better than what it was. So, uh, Orchard View, the residents there, the, uh, president of the association was there, and they, I talked with them the, the next day, and they were, they were okay with, uh, with, with the project going forward from their standpoint.
Couple of questions. Who were the engineers?
It was, yeah.
Blake Alford.
Woodman.
Wood, Woodman and Blake.
So they, so they were describing, uh, the back of the property on the west side?
Yeah.
Uh, that's not their property. That's Mr. Underwood's property.
No, it's on their side.
The south.
The south side.
It's the south side.
The south side, so this is the majority, is, is what they were discussing, and what they were going to do to that area?
Basically, what, a general summary would be that there would be a detention basin that would handle the, the storm water and storm events for the development, and they would also be performing work, increasing the capacity of the ditch by doing some benching. And so it would be based on their projections in better shape than it is now. And again, this is about a rezoning request, this is, these aren't construction documents.
I understand, but the flooding was the purpose of the first meeting.
That's right.
So would you describe for the board or Matthew, you might want to, what benching is, I know what benching is, but they might need an understanding of what benching is.
It might be, I mean, basically, they would be, and not extending the ditch, not removing the banks, but in the flood plain, I believe I'm saying this right, it's either the floodway or the flood plain, they would be expanding area for water to move towards the houses.
All right.
So, I mean, this is going back to the engineer, who was the engineer on Longleaf?
I don't remember, I wasn't, uh, on the preliminary stuff on Longleaf, I don't remember.
What about Bell Oak?
I don't know, I wasn't here for Bell Oak.
Because I've heard the same story on all of these, it's gonna improve the flooding, and I'm the one that gets the phone calls because of flooding.
I don't know, I can find out for you, but I don't know who it was, not off the top of my head.
So, I wasn't prepared tonight, uh, wasn't gonna do that, I knew it was gonna be a lengthy building, a meeting, but next board meeting, if I can, I'm gonna come in here and show you everything that's been cleaned out of those ditches, uh, four days, finish that Friday evening, uh, both on the south side of that property and on north of Luckney, all the way to Bentley and Tollison. And I believe we increased the capacity of that ditch by 40 or 50% just from the trees. And when I show you these pictures, you're gonna be somewhat in disbelief, but, uh, did a good job, I think, and we're just gonna shift and go to the next place now, so, um, anyway, all right, I'm not the engineer. All right, so is there any more discussion on this? Is there a motion to, we brought it back up for a vote, it's live, is that right, Mr. Baker? Live discussion?
Actually, now, it's in whatever the board's given funding.
Okay, thank you. So what's the will of the board?
Is this to bring it back up or to vote over? Okay. I didn't know the vote was bringing it up. Motion.
So your motion is to approve the application and adopt the rezoning process, is there any application?
Yes.
All right, we got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, to approve the rezoning request. Is there any more discussion on the matter? All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. They showed their, they showed their hand. All right, so, let's, let's, all right, let's do it. Those that are opposed, please raise your hand, I got three down here. Okay. So it passes four to three, is that correct, Mr. Baker? Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
When this first came up, we discussed a citywide hydrology study.
Well, currently, we have a countywide model. The citywide study would be a part of our comprehensive plan. The engineer of record on this property, I mean, I, I can't speak to how they, how they base their model, but they studied this site, and they looked at the countywide model. So as far as our citywide hydrology study, that would be a part of our comprehensive plan, which we just released a RFQ on. I don't remember the exact date it was published, but I believe it's due back to us by July
Okay. All right. Thanks, Sam. Good evening, sir.
Take all four of these at once?
Yes, sir.
All right. Number one, request permission to transfer Jesse Beaman from a communications officer to a patrolman trainee effective June 24th, 2024, and set rate of pay in accordance with the memo. Number two, request permission to accept a check in the amount of $8,341.10 from the Mississippi Bureau of Narcotics and deposit it into the Drug Seizure Fund. Number three, request permission to hire Ellen Farr as a deputy court clerk effective June 24th, 2024, and set rate of pay in accordance with the memo. She's here in the audience. And number four, request permission for a purchase order to Kirk Auto Group in the amount of $221,204 for five 2025 Ford Explorers.
Thank you, sir. And we have my load of graduation on Thursday.
Thursday at 11:00.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve those four items? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. David Ferris. Questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thanks, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're almost done, I'm the last one, hopefully. I, I have one item, and, uh, is request permission for Battalion Chief Adcock, Battalion Chief Beck, Division Chief Jerry King, and Chief Brian Roberts to travel to Biloxi, Mississippi for the 2024 Men's Conference, it's the medical conference, state medical conference. We'll get a lot of continuing hours there for that one, so it's a big one for us.
Is there a motion to approve that request from the fire department? Motion by Mr. Lou Coker. Second by Mr. Harry Williams. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, sir. What?
I was gonna ask if, I wanna have y'all's attention, we got a couple of gentlemen back here, love to be sworn in, to have oath to office.
Promotions, okay. Board, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn, and, uh, we will adjourn immediately after we swear them in, but, uh, who would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lou Coker. Second, Mr. Jerry Crane. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Call them in.
Thank you.
So you're gonna have to describe their promotions, please, to the board?
Yes, sir, we got Captain Jay McClure, and he's, they've been with us probably around 10 years now, and, uh, he made me very proud, he's grew a lot, he's become one heck of a fireman. And we got Captain Jeff Allen, she got promoted, doing an outstanding job already, look forward to his, watching his success over the years. Outstanding, sir. Kind of remedial, but...